Okay, at this time I'll call the January fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen Dixon County Commission meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of things to add to our agenda, and so I'll go ahead and mention those additions. It's to review and consider requests from the Abilene Police Department for a diversion purchase, and we've got a letter in regards to that. And then also review and approve the utility agreement for thirty-four sixty-five Sage Road Bridge Replacement Project. And so I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
You have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of January eighth work session, the regular meeting, the payroll of three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents, abatements of nine hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents, and added tax, five dollars and sixty-six cents.
I may we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Craig, I will go to you for Commissioner comments.
Yeah, the thirteenth, we had a kickoff luncheon for the Economic Development Agency. I think all but, I think there was around twenty people, all two showed up. Going to be again the twenty-ninth at five-thirty to elect the officers, the officials. I've got the, yeah, I've got the mission, their, their organization plan. They, Dave, or Mike is the chairman for the steering committee. They disbanded now, and it'll be up to the people who are on committee to elect the officers that are going to be running the corporation. The whole group will meet quarterly, more or less, and then the other, the executive committee will probably meet monthly or more than that until they get started. As an ex-facile, I'll probably try to attend some of the stuff, but hopefully we have good luck with it. That's all I, there was nothing on the computer, Lynn.
Oh, okay. Laverne?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I attended this week, the, they did have model meeting day at the four-H clubs that put on model meeting. I did attend one of those meetings, but that was all I had.
Okay. The only thing I have is, Brad, I'll need to have you go ahead and put in a reservation for me on the Mac breakfast, which would be next Thursday morning, and I don't know if anyone else is interested in going, and we can just, just let Brad know.
What's the subject going to be on your speaking, Lynn, do you know?
They're having, it has to do with the school district, so, from what I recall. I can look that up real quick to be sure. I think they're right. The other thing is, on the Central Kansas Mental Health Board, there's always a couple of months during the year that they do not hold a meeting, and so there is not a meeting that will be held. This month, we're taking a month off. One of the things they did mention, though, they had a couple of resignations of some individuals that were serving the Dixon County area, so they're looking to fill those positions because that, that is a little bit of a disruption as far as the service is concerned, and so that's something that's, that's going to be in the works. There's also, I had notice of the Abilene Area Chamber event, and we'll need to let them know on that, as far as if we would want to have an entire table or what our reservations will be. So, and that's not till the end of February, so there is a little bit of time on that. Okay. On the, okay, yeah, I stand corrected. It's Colonel Risa Ware. He's the commander of the Irwin Army Hospital, and he's going to be the speaker. And it's at the, also, it's at the Riley Conference Center, so it's not the typical location on that. Usually we're at the courtyard there. I guess about the only other thing is, you know, I know all of us are going to kind of be alert to the fact, I think the governor's given the state of the state address this, this week, this evening, I believe, and, you know, there's probably kind of everything that's, the discussions are going to begin more in earnest on what's going to take place down there at Topeka and some of the funding decisions and so on, so we'll want to stay right on top of that. I don't have anything else. Doug, did you have anything that you would want to bring up at this time?
We've started the process for the next tax sale, which would be two thousand and ten, and those documents have been assembled for those who are behind for the three-year period of time, and then we have sent those off to the two title companies in town for the research to be done, and as soon as that comes back to me, we'll send out the notices and move forward with the next tax sale. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We do not have any proclamations or petitions, and also, we have not received any other public comments. I will mention this morning that we met with our health department and also Dr. Holmes, and they just gave us an update, and, you know, there's really just a lot of activities, a lot of things they're involved with as far as meeting the needs in the county, so it was good to have that update that is, really makes the person just even more aware of how many needs there are and how important that service is to our county, so, yeah, it was a good discussion we had with them. Okay, at this time, Brad, if you'll go ahead and give us your report, please.
Okay, start with the blue tab when you're packing. We've got a market to follow list of the projects that they completed in two thousand and fourteen, and I believe there were about twenty-one projects that our crews had done between tubes and structures, bridges, a couple of them there. One of these got marked as urgent repair, was one that had came up that we weren't planning on. There were a number of them, not all, not all urgent, but there were ones that we hadn't targeted to do last year, but they came up and we had to do, so. You can also see that four of those are nano passage structures that we replaced, those being ones we got federal money from, gives Fish and Wildlife on, shows the amounts of its township through, and down through the list, so.
Have we completed all those now?
These are all, oh, no, we've got, we've got one more that is in, in the, has been approved, and we're hoping to get a little bit more funding if it comes through from federal government, we don't know yet, so we'll continue to take it as long as we can get it, so.
As long as one or nurse.
Yeah, we've got one program for this year, and when the weather gets better, we'll do that, cause we're within that window.
Do we have any other, in the China area that need to be replaced that we could, that, I mean, are questionable? I mean, they're, you know, if we got the money to replace them, we should replace.
If we, if we are provided some money to do it, we can come up with options.
Nothing, nothing is failing.
Are there any that are failing today? No.
Okay.
But they're, and they, they are in such a condition and age that
Right.
if the money was available, we would take advantage of it.
They're probably sixty, seven years old, yeah.
Yeah, so, absolutely. So we'll continue to clean that, remove those as long as we can, so. Under the red tab, you have got material rest, which is in your action items when you get down lower, and I'll go into that detail when we get to it, but those are the bits for the steel, structural steel for the two fifty-seven mile highway project that we're very rapidly nearing a start date on. The guys this week moved over to seven fifty Flag Road and are removing a small structure that they're replacing yet since the weather looked like it was going to be further conducive to work, so they're working on it as we speak. Also, when you're packing under the pink tab, you've got a, on the top, I believe it is the, a letter from County Attorney Darrell Hawkins where he has approved a request from the Abilene Police Department for a piece of investigative equipment, and given his blessing to have it taken from the diversion fund if you so choose. And I would note there that, for the record, a couple of stipulations that he would like to see on that is if we're using the diversion fund to purchase this, that personnel that are trained will provide the service to all the other law enforcement agencies in Dickinson County that may need to use it, so. And with that request, I'm assuming the Abilene Police Department has agreed to that, so. The fee schedule, I also sent you the final version of the county's two thousand and fifteen fee schedule, which is, it'll be marked with the yellow tab. Couple changes in there that are, I would not classify as significant by any means, but we reworded the front page just slightly to make it a little bit clearer for Barb in her office for open records requests. It's just more of a language change than anything with fees we really want changed. The one that did change was the one that changes every year, and that's under noxious weed, that one page six, and we had a couple of those chemicals that went up just slightly, and we had a couple of them that went down just slightly, and that's fairly typical. We sell those chemicals a cost by statute, so we reflect every year what the cost changes are, so. I will say the changes, when I made the changes there, they were not more than a dollar or two per quantity, whether it's a quart or gallon, whatever it was, so they were very slight changes. And that's basically the bulk of the, there were no other charges that were, or changes that were notable on, on the fee schedule, so. Let's see, we spoke a little bit last, last, or a couple weeks ago about the intersection issue with Chapman School District, Quail Road, K-18. We did hear back from Dale Hirschberger yesterday, or Tuesday, and he basically said that it's, they've gone, they've looked at it, and they've had their first, the K-18 people look at it, and they felt like the issue was off of K-18 right away, so it was a township or county issue, although they're willing to work with us on whatever we want to do, so. Since that time, we've reached out, we've got noble townships coming in tomorrow to meet with Martin and I and John and discuss options on what we can do there and see what we can do to help them out, or see what the options are from our standpoint, and then we'll go from there with K-18 and what can be done, so.
Could you forward after Lacy fell in, Randy, to, you know, let them know?
Yes, that's what John did.
Okay, okay.
To let them know that we're, we're taking the work.
Yeah, cause I talked to Randy, and I said, we hadn't heard anything back from Hirschberger for, okay.
Yeah, this, this was yesterday afternoon, he responded.
I think I saw Randy last week.
And hopefully we can respond back to him tomorrow, let him know a little bit more of a definite direction on where we want to go, so. John and Martin have been out and looked at it, and of course, the township guys are going to be familiar with it, so.
But how could K-18 say that they would not, isn't the section right next to the highway need to be changed?
Well, if you bring it up to where their right of way starts, it's, don't, let's put, I'll go back to the history. When we put the tubes in there after, after the high water event we've had, there was a twenty-foot tube, we put it up, the township only got it, and I got on the board, I said, replacement with twenty, with, you know, twenty isn't going to do any good, we need to be able to raise the road up. We probably raised it five or six foot down to bottom, and we should correct it at some, but it's still, when you, still, you got, but what the problem is, is Laverne, is we had contacted them too, that we didn't interfere with their right of way.
Yeah.
And, and we told them what we were going to do, and the same response there we got. Long as it doesn't interfere with our right of way, we have no problem with it. I guess that's the short answer.
They looked at, according to Dale's message, they looked at the site distance as far as the approach, the signs and stuff, felt like that was all appropriate, but the slope issue that we're talking about
It's on township.
It's back on the township, which we agree.
The slope issue is on the township.
Yeah, so.
And, and I, and back then, when, I contacted them back ten, twelve years ago, don't remember the money difference, they didn't have a problem with this, cause there was asphalt coming down, probably just a little past where the right of way was, next to like, you know, thinking it'd make a whole lot of difference if, you know, get on that a little bit.
Sure. It'll be easy enough to work with.
Yeah.
They just sent it.
Just want to know what's happening.
They didn't feel like that they had any, you know, substantial responsibility here that would cause them to go in and repair and fix it, and, and we, we worked to curb with that, so. At least now we know where we're at, we can move forward with the township. We did receive, Bruce received an application yesterday from Abilene Machine. They're making application for an economic development tax exemption on a new addition to their warehouse. They currently have one that's in place from, that will expire this year. It's a ten-year exemption, and this one would be an exemption on the addition to the one that's expiring. The one that's expiring is the one that they got and were granted on the warehouse that they built after the fire, the big warehouse that you see, they're all just off on forty, so. Bruce has a couple questions that he wants, Doug, to review and look at and make sure everything's legal before he's, when he signs off on it. I'd send that to Doug and talk to him some more after the meeting, so. After last week's meeting, I did reach out to Melissa Landerman at KEC about the Abilene Products question, and I had an abatement. Melissa immediately replied back and said, yes, I just recently did a bunch of research on abatements, and I can give you some good information, give me a little bit of time, and since legislature kind of has been in Topeka this week, I'm sure she's a little busy, I haven't heard back from her, but if I haven't heard anything by Monday, I'll drop a message to remind her again, so. And then tomorrow morning, I'll be, I'm going over to Chamber and breakfast, and going to meet with them, and they've asked me if I want to just brief them on county issues and, and subjects, so I'll be going over and doing that at seven to seven thirty in the morning, so, that's all I've got.
Okay. I'll go through the notices and communications. We have an envelope from North Central Flint Hills Area Agency, and it's just their, their minutes and their meetings. I see, of course, we know Melvin Leckren was one of the ones present and represents that, so there's the meeting minutes for review. I guess I just missed this earlier, but this is, we did receive a letter, this is on the Area Chamber of Commerce banquet, and they're just mentioning that, of course, Dickinson County is a member, and so the tickets are forty dollars, and they're going to be giving some awards at that time also. They also are looking for, for table sponsors, and it kind of has their formula there, so Brad, I'll give this to you to kind of see what, how many we would have attending. It does say that if, if you do reserve a table of eight, that it includes one free ticket, I guess, along with your other tickets, and, and you're among the first to eat, so I don't think they'll run out of food. Anyway, this is, we'll figure out.
Will I be replaying on the dinner?
I won't be, remember, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is February twenty-sixth.
And what is, what is the date on that?
February twenty-sixth.
Tentatively, I plan on attending, but we probably have a little bit of time to respond to it, and then also if we would choose to be a table sponsor, it might be, might be good to participate in that way. I guess one of the things is you, you do obligate yourself to providing a centerpiece and also some kind of party favor giveaways or whatever for each person that sits at that table. And sometimes I know at some of their other events, whoever, for example, if, if one business downtown happens to sponsor a table, they don't always just have everybody from that business sit at that table, cause they want to have a chance to mingle and visit with people from other businesses, so sometimes there'll kind of be some exchanges on who sits at the table. But anyway, just mark it on your calendar, and we can discuss it further here in the next week or two. There's a project management workshop that is going to be, has a couple locations taking One of them does happen to be in Salina, another is, it is at Topeka, but it looks like they have a dozen or so that are here in Kansas that are going to be taking place in March and April, so we can take a look at it, see if there's any department heads we, we want in reach to go, Brad, if you're interested, or we'll let you evaluate that. Just have a truck fleet magazine. We have a letter here from the Eighth Judicial District. I might mention too, Judge Platt had resigned and had a reception this past week, and I had kind of planned on going, but I had a conflict as far as schedule and wasn't able to attend, so. I imagine there were some people from the county here that were in attendance. This is, I thought we received this before, this might be a second notice on it, cause it's, it's just showing it received here, one, twelve, fifteen, but it's in regards to the K-CAM coverage, and Dickinson County's share is twenty-five percent, which is seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and they're saying the annual contribution for the entire Eighth Judicial District is thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, and so there's, there's that bill to consider.
That's for community corrections.
We have our report from the Court of the District Court. We also have from KDHE, a letter here, and this is a permit renewal. Type of permit is household hazardous waste, and this is something that was sent to Randy Barton. Says a copy of the certificate that general liability insurance is required. This should be an updated copy with proof of insurability, and so anyway, this is just housekeeping item or notification. We have a letter from the North Central Regional Planning Commission. Wasn't quite sure of the acronym here, it says something about the P E N Committee, but they're asking for a, the annual fee is three thousand, five hundred dollars for North Central Regional Planning Commission, and I think that's, that's something that's proved worthwhile, and any comments from any of the commission on that?
We just, have utilized a lot of their resources as far as projects that we've done, so they, they have given a lot of hours for us.
And then Craig, you're one of the representative board members?
Correct.
So, okay. Okay. I'm sure we've seen that show up in some buildings. I received a, from Trainer Architects, a calendar. I've got quite a few of these, I might be able to use it, but if someone else would want it, I'd certainly make that available to them. And I think that's all we have. Okay, we'll move on then to consider, consideration of resolutions. The first thing we have is Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five. This is a gap waiver for two thousand and fifteen, and you need to go ahead and formalize the adoption of that resolution, and they need the signatures of all three of us.
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adopt Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five, and this is, as I mentioned, a gap waiver for two thousand and fifteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I'll sign this and pass it on for the rest of the signatures. The next resolution we have is establishing the appointment of board members to the Dickinson County Planning Commission, and this is to appoint James Hedstrom, twenty-five, twenty-five Oak Road to the Abilene, Kansas Planning Commission, and this is Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five, A.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to adopt Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five, A, and this appoints James Hedstrom, twenty-five, twenty-five Oak Road of Abilene, Kansas to the Planning Commission. Got a couple more of these to do. This is the same resolution number, but the initial B, and this is for the appointment of Diane Landers, eight twenty-four East First Street, Abilene, Kansas, and this is to the Dixon County Planning Commission for a term of three years.
I may that we appoint Diane Landers.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to appoint Diane Landers to the Dixon County Planning Commission for a term of three years, and this is through Resolution zero, zero-one, one-five, one-five, B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next one we have is Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five, C, and this is to appoint Donita Felbusch, thirteen thirty-one Flag Road, Abilene, Kansas, to a three-year term to the Dixon County Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to appoint Donita Felbusch to the Dixon County Planning Commission through Resolution zero-one, one-five, one-five, C. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I don't believe we have any other unfinished business, and the next item will go on to other business, and this is the annual commission reorganization and county appointments, and I do want to say that it's, I felt privileged, and it's been a good learning experience to serve as chairman this past year, and the year has gone quickly, and now it's going even quicker because we're ready to reorganize and have a new chairman and vice chairman, so I would entertain a motion for that.
I may that we elect Craig Chamberlain as chairman.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Craig, and at this point, I'll let you finish leading the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Do you have any nominations for vice chairman? Hold nominate Laverne Myers.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motion carried. Need an appointment for county engineer, John Goth. Have motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint county health officer, recommendation is Dr. Brian Holmes. We have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Set official court hours of the courthouse operations, recommendation is from eight to five P M. daily for the two thousand and fifteen with the holiday closures.
Make that a motion?
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Not all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much. Motion carried. Set official work session with meeting days and times for permission concurrently. It's with a work session from nine to eleven and regular meeting, starting at eleven until conclusion of work. I'll move that we make that, our work sessions and executive, or regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Designate the official county newspaper for two thousand and fifteen as a reflector chronicle.
I so moved.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint representative to Central Kansas Mental Health Board, currently Commissioner Peterson, would you be willing to serve again?
Yes, I will.
I'll move that that be happened.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appoint representative to the North Central Kansas Juvenile Board, currently Laverne is serving. Care to continue, Laverne?
Yes.
I so moved.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appoint representative to North Central Kansas Regional Planning, currently serving that commission, position, I'll make a motion, I continue.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Designate the official depository for the county for two thousand and fifteen. U M B Bank, Abilene Branch of Astrabank, Solomon State Bank, Pinnacle Bank of Abilene, Dixon County Bank of Enterprise, First National Bank of Harrington, Central National Bank of Harrington, Citizen State Bank of Woodbine, First National Bank of Hope, and First Bank of Kansas, Abilene Branch.
I move that we delegate, designate these as our official banks.
Second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adopt the official fee schedule for two thousand and fifteen to be published on the county website.
I so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adopt the two thousand and fifteen payroll counter as submitted by the H R Director. Also move that?
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adopt official employee pay grade schedule for two thousand and fifteen.
I so moved.
Second.
Been moved to second, any discussion? If not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adopt resolution regarding gap, general.
We done that.
Oh, we did that?
Yeah.
Okay. I forgot, yeah, we did do that. Review and consider the county handbook, section three eighteen, with illness and disability pool that was brought to us last meeting. Any discussion on the changes that were made? Want to just say what they were, Brad, for?
Yes, that's, the illness and disability pools, the pool that employees can donate to, to help other employees that may have a catastrophic illness and need, have exhausted during sick leave. In the past, our policy has read that only the employee themselves could be the sick person that causes that request, and we've made a request to change that to a spouse or a dependent, within their household dependent, and that's the only change, so.
I move that we approve those changes.
Second it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, I'm, Reverend, of the Memphis County, but not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider approving bridge, bid for the material, it's the Two Fifty-Seven Old Highway Bridge, it's in your, the bids are in your packet under the red tab. Like that, Brad, like the tabs. Want to go through and highlight the, your.
Yes, this, this is the narrow bridge at Two Fifty-Seven Old Highway Forty. As you recall, we've discussed many times over the years, but this particular bridge is one that we are going to, after widening, doing a safety edge of widening Old Forty, it became even more dangerous, I really believe. We are gonna build this bridge ourselves, we have the permits in place, we purchased the, and obtained the necessary right of way documents from land on it. At this point, plans are to start this as soon as the weather straightens up with our crews, probably looking at some time in March, but Martin's personnel have reached out and solicited bids from the vendors for the structural steel material for that, two different categories being the structural steel and then the decking and guardrail material. As far as the structural steel, we received two responses. One was from Wellborn Sales of Salina for forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-six cents. The second bid was from Huskers Steel, Columbus, Nebraska, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and no cents, and again, that's for seventy-one pieces of variable, very length and size materials. The second bid request was for decking and guardrail material, and we only received one response, there's only one vendor around that sells that stuff, and that's Wellborn Sales of Salina, their bid was fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. With those, it's our recommendation we accept the low bid from Wellborn Sales on those items for a total of sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
I move that we accept the bid from Wellborn Sales for a total of sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Been moved to second, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I guess our, my concern was, you know, how are you routing the traffic when, when they work on this?
The road will be closed for thirty or sixty days. We will not have a detour. Their local traffic can go around on Twenty-One Hundred Avenue. We're not going to post that because it's a sand township road.
It is an all-weather road, though, I mean, it's.
Uh, yeah.
Depends on what spring it's like, huh?
It's, it's, it's blow-sand road.
Yeah.
And so if the weather's really bad.
Get a lot of traffic on it.
Get a lot of traffic, it could be an issue, but, you know, locals know that. We're not publishing it, 'cause we don't want strangers going around that way and then getting stuck, and we'd be responsible.
Gonna put road close signs up like a fair road.
There'll be one fair and one solid, and so I seventy will be the route around for the bulk of the big traffic, so.
Yeah.
And that, in that situation, we're just, we're gonna get it done as soon as we can and get it back open, so.
And Abilene Machine would be the one that would probably be most impacted by, if they know in advance, they can tell their.
Yeah, and they do, Abilene Machine and then maybe the Greyhound store, some of those just west of Fair Road.
Yeah, to get off of Solomon.
Yeah, and, and if they, if Abilene Machine knows in advance, and they can tell their callers just to go to Fair Road and down and come in that way, it'll alleviate a lot of the issues, so.
So it's only a couple, two, three miles, is it?
It'd be a three-mile, dude.
Is it three miles up to the interstate?
Up to the interstate from Fair Road?
No, from where the bridge is being replaced, it's only a mile and a half.
Abilene Machine?
No, from where, interstate to where the bridge is being replaced, from north, from south, yeah.
Oh, yeah, a mile and three quarters, one and a half, yeah.
So it won't be a long.
Right, it, it's just you have to drive back that mile to Solomon and get on the interstate and go around, or, you know, if you're coming from the west, it would probably be farther, 'cause if you're a big truck, you have to go interstate to Fair and come back around, and that'd be probably the most inconvenient, but most of that traffic's gonna be on interstate already, and not gonna be coming through Solomon, so. Like all bridge replacements and all projects we do, there's a certain degree of inconvenience that goes along with it, whether it's us or any other agency, and you just, that's the, that's the cost of progress. Our, our concern is that we do it safely and, and keep the motor in public safe, so.
Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consider approving lease purchase agreement with U M B for dump truck and ambulance purchases.
This is a lease purchase agreement with U M B. We had solicited interest rates from all the local banks that were interested and participated. U M B came back, I think I mentioned to you a month or two ago, they came back with lowest interest rate, and so we have a lease purchase agreement with them on, with the terms and everything for a period of, I believe it's three years. The total is seven hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars of purchases, and that includes the two new dump trucks, the ambulance that we have on order that'll be done here in a few months, and then also the twelve lead monitors that I briefed you on here a couple of months ago, that have actually been delivered, the company was gracious enough to list away and have them, give them in service, and, and this is for the lease purchase of those as well.
I move that we approve this lease purchase agreement with U M B Bank for the dump trucks and ambulance purchase outlined by Brad.
Second it. What was the amount again, Brad?
Seven oh five, nine twenty.
Seven oh five, nine twenty. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Additional items is review and consider request from the Abilene Police Department for diversion fund purchase. Brad, you on it?
Yes, the request has been made by Lieutenant Wilkins, through the county attorney, to purchase a piece of investigative equipment, that as I understand is a computerized voice stress analyzer. The cost of that piece of equipment, including the training for two officers, is eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, according to the bid they accepted. A condition of, of county attorney Hawkins' approval is that the officers that are trained are willing to use that equipment and their expertise to provide the service to all law enforcement agencies in Dickinson County, which have a need of such an examination, so. He has, Darryl has given his blessing to pending your approval. Currently, the balance on the diversion funds is right at fifty-four thousand dollars.
I would go ahead and move that we facilitate these diversion funds being used for the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for the Abilene Police Department, noting the condition that, that they do also make this available for other law enforcement agencies in Dixon County.
I'll second it.
Been moved to second it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Review and approve utility agreement for the Thirty-four Sixty-five Sage Road Bridge replacement project, which we're getting the money from the state for that project.
Yes, that's, as, as Craig noted, that's the money that, on the state's ten million-dollar bridge lottery, I guess, if we liked a better term, where they made that available for replacement of local bridges. We were able to receive one of those grants in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is the agreements with the, I think there's three utility companies, maybe four, that are affected by that, and it's the utility agreements with those companies, one of those precursor things that have to be done before any work can be done, so.
What all the, is, Cal Valley doing the, doing the utility workforce, or is that just something?
Actually, the engineering firm on that one is B J Consultants.
Okay.
And the, the companies, these agreements affect their D S and O, and.
Other words, no cost to us, just direct to do it?
Well, we don't know yet, it depends on where the utilities are. We're the ones that, in that situation, we're the ones that cause the movement, so if, if they have to be moved, then we may have to pay for the relocation.
Yeah, once they're located, if they're not, don't have to be moved, we won't have to pay anything.
That's correct.
Okay.
But this gives the utility companies the right to be in that right of way.
And, and if they need to be moved, they do it, okay. Do we have motions?
Yeah, I move that we approve this bid at Two Fifty-Seven, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong line.
Thirty-four Sixty-five.
Yeah, Thirty-four. On Sage Road.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
This is the fee schedule, if you just wanna sign that and then I'll scan it and put on the website.
Anything else we brought before the commission today? Not all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Can adjourn.